Welcome to the pound of board representatives meeting for January 17. Uh, first on the agenda is the project of the beaches. We have a last week's presentation, Mrs. Mrs. Rose, your second grade class. Animal habitats.
Thank you. Thank you. Both second grades, Mrs. Mary Lou Hutton and my class as well, have been working on animal habitats and writing reports and making dioramas to show the different environments that animals live in, and we'd like to share them with you tonight. Some of them have reports to read and some of them are just going to explain their diorama. Kendra, would you like to start?
Zebras by Kendra Boyd. Do you know lions hunt zebras? Do you know zebras have to drink water every day? Some zebras live in zoos. Zebras munch on blades of grass. Did you know most zebras live there? Lives in Africa. Zebras are like horses and give both two foals. Zebras have white and black stripes. Most zebras live in large holes. They also sleep standing up.
This is Van Goslin.
Great big grizzly by Van Goslin. Did you know grizzlies can't stand on two feet? They are hu- hu- huge when they stand like that. They eat fish. Did you know they have babies in the winter? Bears can live up to 25 years. Brown bears have sharp claws to dig holes in the winter. If they don't have enough food, they hibernate. I would like to see a brown bear at the zoo.
Next up is Sam Herbert.
Black-capped chickadees are interesting. Black-capped chickadees live in deciduous woods. I've once seen a chickadee in deciduous woods. They eat seeds in six and berries usually. The reason they are called their black-capped chickadees is because their head is black. They protect themselves by singing because it warns the other birds. They make their nests out of twigs and sometimes with glass. I like black-capped chickadees.
Next up is Avery Palatier. She's sharing her animal habitat.
My animal habitat was marbled ducks. And I put marbled ducks in the pond, grass around, cattails, salamander, fish, and a frog on a rock.
Next up is Brianna.
Um, I did wolves and I used a lot of details. I went outside and got some rocks for it. I did this report because I love wolves and I love learning about wild animals.
Cheetahs by Chloe Campbell. Did you know cheetahs run faster than some cars? The cheetah is a type of cat. Cheetahs live in Africa or Asia on grasslands and savannas. Cheetahs eat zebras and antelope. Cheetahs bodies have black stripes near the eyes and tan with black spots. Cheetahs protect themselves with their claws and teeth. They can run fast. Female cheetahs give birth to three to five cubs. They can run 70 miles per hour. Their speed helps them catch their prey. That's why I like cheetahs by Chloe Campbell.
The beluga whale by Simon Ross. My favorite animal is the beluga whale. It is very big. Beluga whales are a type of whale. They are a mammal. They live near or in the Arctic Ocean. They eat with 34 pointed teeth and eat worms. Fish, worm, worms and fish. Adult beluga, uh, adult beluga whales are white and they grow up to 15 to 20 feet long. The ba- the beluga whale babies are black or brown. They have sharp teeth. They have babies one at a time. Beluga whale babies are called calves. They have real teeth too. Now you know my favorite animal is the beluga whale. They get in jars.
This is Elizabeth. She did hers on the jaguar. Go ahead and tell them what you did.
I put pictures of the jaguar on the side of the doors and I made a blue cup for the waterfall so they could drink. I put predators around the box.
My name is Dana Wolf speaking. I did the lions. Because my favorite animal is lions.
And explain what you read, how you read it.
So I used some new grass and rocks.
My name is Sunny Martin. I done the festival. I put trees and white paper for snow and I put grass with with animals and I found marker on the, um, background for the, um, lakes could drink water and go on mountains.
Very nice. Thank you, second graders, and thank you parents for coming out tonight. We appreciate your support. I'm Brianna. We didn't get to see yours. Come on over and show us your diorama.
Yep, she sat down too quickly.
Yeah, we want to see yours too.
This is the jaguar.
Nice job.
The rest of their classmates are on display around the library, so there's different ones throughout the library.
It's the hard work. Thank you, second graders. You did an amazing job tonight presenting. Thank you.
I'm a cowboy fan, but that's probably my second, leaving all my brothers and family giant fans, so.
Well, they were kind of New England's team.
They were.
Patriots were.
Always on TV.
Yeah.
Steve Grogan then.
Okay, you're up.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I got caught in the crowd. Um, so we've got the audit tonight. With us is Ron Smith, uh, principal of RH Smith Company, um, lead auditor. I'll let you, he'll introduce him, give you all his credentials, and walk you through your audit.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So here's what I learned tonight. I saw my first beluga whale four years ago down in New London, Connecticut. And I didn't realize that that's how they make the caviar, where they get the caviar example too, as I understand. So I learned-
Something to do today.
And they are white. I can assure you of that. And they're probably the closest beluga whales, I believe, to where we sit right here locally. So, so, uh, I'm Ron Smith. We, uh, I have about 23 people now that I have the pleasures of working with and since, um, uh, sometime, what, September, October, uh, we've had the pleasures of, uh, visiting central office and doing all the supervisory union in its member school districts. We do about 250 to 275 governments in the states of Maine and Vermont. I hail from the great town of St. John'sberry. So, uh, it was great to come, come, always come back to Vermont. We do about 100 Vermont school systems and, uh, and we were pleased to certainly, uh, do you well. So where to start? There's four types of opinions that we issue. There's a unqualified opinion, which is the best opinion. There's a qualified, which is a modification of your report. You know, there's some deviation in accounting. And then there's an adverse and a disclaimer, which is virtually no opinions at all. Those are bad. So you've got the highest opinion that you could possibly get. That's an unqualified opinion, you know, and all the member school districts and the supervisory union did as well. And to hit the highlights of the, uh, of the supervisory union panel school districts audit, um, on page 17 is your financial statements. It kind of tells the picture. Remember, this is as of June 30, 2015. The school district had, I mean, the very first column, general fund, about a million dollars under total assets of what you owned, uh, of which predominantly a lot of it was liquid in cash and against liabilities and obligations of $336,000. Leaves you with general, uh, fund equity, fund balance, carryover balance, surplus, all the words that you may know it as. Uh, $681,000. It's the second number up in the first column, um, up from the bottom. So of which $34,000 was unassigned, so you can use that towards future budgets. And I believe $340,000 was obligated towards your budget that's going to end June 30, 2016. I think financially, you guys are rock solid. I think you're in great financial shape. You know, uh, you always had been. I looked back three periods, you know, and, uh, and I think that, uh, the panel school district is definitely, uh, very well-funded and, uh, well-maintained and frugal. So if you flip to two more pages, to page 19, you'll get an idea of where your money came in and where your money, uh, went out. And you took in about $4,356,000. First column again, spent 4.241 million dollars, leaving you with $115,000 of money, more than what you spent for that fiscal year. $65,000 got transferred to a bus, bus reserve and major repair fund. 35 to bus reserve, 30 to a major repair fund for buildings and anything that you would have inside the buildings, boiler equipment. So in addition to that $300,000 I just told you about that wasn't really assigned to anything on the first page, you got $80,000 sitting in your bus reserve account and another $200,000 sitting in a capital fund. And I think that that's great news too. And, uh, there are very, a lot of school systems try to do what you've done, you know, and setting and putting money aside calculatedly, you know, for that day when you may need it in capital or infrastructure needs. And, uh, uh, it's difficult, especially with tight budgets. You guys have done that. You've got almost $280,000 seated for future needs, and I think that that's a good thing on top of your financial stability. Really, I think that that's all good. Largely, this past year, um, you, you're, you returned almost $455,000 to your budget, you know, as I recall, you know, which, which allowed you, like I say, you're a very frugal school system. I don't think there's any lavish spending. There's certainly no lavish overspending. And if you flip to page 52, there's a picture of your financial budget to actual, um, to the tune of, you'll see that what you budgeted and what was actually spent. $455,000 got returned back to your bottom line. One of the conversation pieces, and I think, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, it was panel, was, uh, I believe your special education revenues came in $95,000 under what you estimated to collect. Other than that, that was a very common thing for all Vermont school systems last year, actually all Vermont and Maine school systems, you know, last year. But certainly, uh, special ed is probably one of the most volatile revenue estimations that you can predict and one of the expenditures, one of the most volatile expenditures that you can predict as well. And it's really special that can make or break a school system. You know, the good news is, is that, uh, it didn't happen here this year. Actually, special education budget was $11,000 under budget. I would probably say 70% of the school systems that I, uh, that I have audited this year were all over budget special ed. So I think that, uh, clearly you guys understand your business. I think that you, uh, are financially solid and stable, and that's really the highlights of this product and document. There were some, there were some issues school-wide regarding student accounts. Panel, you know, my recollection with panel is that there was still some statements that we didn't get that we requested, you know, that we'll follow up on. But we got PTA. I think you have PTA using your ID number. I don't know if you all know that, but that's one of the student accounts that you have here in the, uh, school system is your PTA account. And, uh, we, we didn't see any issues, you know, with any irregularities or fraud or anything like that. But district-wide, there's some things that we want to clean up. I don't recall panel was on that list, you know, but, uh, just to let you know that that's something that we'll continue to look at and work with central office because there are some issues, uh, member district-wide that I think that have been conversation pieces at other school systems, so.
And I would imagine if, uh, for some reason, if we're documenting it in the wrong direction or using-
Yeah.
-that we would be told prior to our, our audit.
Yeah, uh, so, so, yeah, and I think the common sense would tell your principal, you know, would be the logical person, you know, with the distribution of the funds, so. But, uh, we'll certainly keep your prize, and that'll be a work in progress for the whole supervisory union, and we'll certainly look forward to getting back to you on that, so. Yeah. Other than that, really, I think that that is the state of the state of the panel school district. I think that you guys are financially solid. I think you've had some foresight. I think you've put some money away when, where, and, and not only have you put some money away, you've put money where, way, where it's needed, you know, more important.
Good job.
So, yeah, and I think you've done a great job. I do, so.
Any questions?
You start out with assets, you mean, you go to the liquid assets, we have no question. This report, talk about our fixed assets at all?
So if you look towards the back of the document, and I'll flip you, it's going to be a couple of pages that it talks about it. So the first page is going to talk about page 32. And there will be a summary of your fixed assets with depreciation as of June 30, 15. And that's it. We don't have that supplementary scan. Normally what we'll do is put a little more detail in the back, and we just didn't, you know, and here it's not necessary. But note four would be your summary of all your fixed assets.
So my vehicles, I think 32, that the buses?
I'd say buses are definitely going to be in the predominance. Is that all of it?
That's all.
Yeah.
Is that $400,000 or negative?
Five, so, so I'm looking just down, uh, one, two, three, four numbers down. Vehicles, $499,000.
You're saying that's the value?
That would have been your cost of those buses when originally purchased.
You depreciated them down how much?
The 403,000.
So, so they've been depreciated the 403,000. So out of the $500,000, there's $403,000 of depreciation that's been recorded against those.
That's not, that's not current value.
But are the book values 190?
The book.
Correct. No, no, the book value would be about $100,000.
Right.
Be the 499 less the 402.
Be about 97,000.
Oh, so I was paying attention. I was paying attention. I knew I'd be tried and tested. Beluga whale.
Any other questions? Did a good job.
Thank you. Thank you. You guys did a good job.
We do have some, um, narrative edits, and I forget, did you bring that? Which one? I think they're on pages, nothing significant, it's just some grammatical stuff. I think on pages like eight through 12 or something.
I don't think there's much in column.
10, actually, might just be on page 10. So, well, there's one on page 12, so, um, on page 10, if you're looking at that, um, I want to put a value, and this is my management discussion and analysis, it's not part of Ron's audit, and he can explain that further if you need some explanations to it. But, um, I want to put a value to those salary and benefits that were underspent, which is just kind of left out there hanging, and I want to put a value there, um, show you how much that was. Um, and then I just, um, the next paragraph down, I just, I want to find a better way to say that propane, not spending the 30,000 in capital reserve, which is transferred to the major repair fund. It's, it's accurate, I just want to find a better grammatical way to say that. And then on page 12, or, you know, page 12, the last bullet where it talks about Act 46, at the end of that, after, um, $249,000, I want to put FY17 in there. So if you could, if it's the board's pleasure and desire, if they could accept the audit with those grammatical changes, we'll get this final to you and take the word draft off of there.
We have a motion to-
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded, to accept the audit from the RH, R, Smith Company. All those, any discussion on it?
Just, you have one more. As far as the change in the assessment now, we used to pay for this directly, now we don't, now we're assessed for it?
Correct.
Is that going? So we're showing, this is the first year of the assess, you've been assessed three years now?
It's at least a second. I don't know if it's been-
Or that's his budget. Okay, that's his a second.
It's been at least two, if not three.
All right, thank you very much.
Giving no other discussions, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. unanimous.
Thank you much. Apologize, I got to run out. We got to go up to Mount Anthony.
Guys, I'll have a good evening. Thank you.
Leaving your budget discussions, I'm very capable of hands a gym, and if he screws it up, fuck you.
All right, we're going to hold up on our budget discussion to the end, and we'll go to action items. You have your treasurer's report for December. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the treasurer's report, signify by raising your hand. Okay, unanimous. All right, move down to the consent agenda. We have a motion-
So moved.
Okay, I need a second.
No second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? None? Oh, all right. All right, seeing no, no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, unanimous. Okay, there's no policies. Move down to facilities.
I didn't have anything to report on from last month. I don't think there was anything to carry over for facilities.
Okay, I just, Kevin had, um, I was questioning every month about the elevator, and Kevin had explained to me that, um, there is a difference. We do pay it every month, but it's, it's below $300 now. It used to be 320, 340 or something in that ballpark. But now we only pay 295, but they come every other month to inspect it unless we need it sooner. But that kind of cleared up what I had thought, so we're all set there. All right, so we're going to jump right to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. How you doing?
Yeah, I'm happy.
Good, good. Just a few items, and I'll be probably heading off to Mount Anthony too before we get there. Still no date set for negotiations for, um, parent educators and support staff, but they've had a change in their, uh, their offices. I think that's what has kind of delayed it. So Dina Atwood from Sitzel Page will be representing the SU. You have your points. My discussion with her today is she's going to be, uh, calling a meeting for us to it, even if the other side isn't there. So who's the representative from pound one? Yeah, right. So you'll be hearing directly from Dina or from Mary Lee, once that data is set, so we can at least start to identify our issues with length of contract, what are the issues that we might want to address. So we're going to move forward with that, even though we don't have a negotiation because it's- contract expires, yeah, right, at the end of the year. We're also working on, uh, professional learning experiences for principals. This is one that Todd probably isn't aware of yet, but professional learning for, um, a series of workshops that we're going to be conducting through our attorneys on everything from dealing with employees and discipline matters, uh, what, um, what needs to be in a letter of, you know, as we, as we go through files, and this is, I'm not talking to Todd here by any means, I am, my experience is that we, as a supervisory union, we need to be better in our documentation. So this is to help our principals, a very difficult job, not only just dealing with staff, but dealing, uh, with particularly special ed, special ed discipline issues, what you can and can't do to give, to make sure that we have everybody on the same pace at the same baseline of knowledge. Because we have been, been experiencing a couple of issues that concerns me as superintendent that, uh, we, we need to get them that support, our principals that support, so they know what to do. So that, that is being planned in conjunction with our HR department and our special education department, and we'll have more details on that when that comes up. Act 46, you know, the- Act forty-six, you know, the, uh, study committee kinda stalled during, uh, budget, 'cause it's been taking so much of everybody's time and getting a meeting date that we can all, all, you know, I kinda lost count of how many budget meetings I've been to, but trying to get a date that everyone can come to. So what we're proposing, we wanna start our public forums again, and we would like to do one in Pownell on February first. It's a Monday. I met with the chair of the Act forty-six Study Committee, Jackie Prue, and we'd like to, you know, we had canceled you back in December. So I hope there's, uh, no conflict with that date, and if you can let me know whether...
Off the top of my head, not that I know of, but the last time, uh, Mary Lee contacted us, filled out the building usage form.
Right, so she'll do the same, yeah.
And we processed that, so.
That's a Monday?
It's a Monday, and then we're looking at, uh, February twenty-second to do the same up in Woodford.
Is that gonna be the same format as Shasbury Republic is invited?
Yeah, it'll begin with a presentation of what, what is in Act forty-six, and then we wanna seek input from the residents of Pownell on what they, uh, want the board, the Act forty-six, uh, Study Committee to hear. We'll warrant it as an Act forty-six Study Committee meeting, and of course, you know, everyone is invited from Pownell, not just the Pownell representative to the Study Committee.
What time is that? Is that set yet? No?
No, we, we, we'll do the bill. I think we did six o'clock last time, but that's a good question, you'd think I would know that, but, uh, yeah.
Will the central office be doing a, a, a release for the banner or something, announcing it or something?
Yeah.
To advertise, you want to public here?
I don't know, advertise, right, where we will put in meeting notices and, uh, we could...
What does Shasbury do?
Yeah, we did send a flyer home with parents and stuff like that, so we could do the same thing. Yep.
So Todd could do that?
Either myself or Donna Leep, the Assistant Superintendent, completed all mid-year, uh, reviews with principals and directors of the SU to make, to... If you remember from when I gave my goals, I did not wanna wait till the end of the year just to do that. I know that I didn't meet with Todd directly, but Donna Leep did, and I think it's important that we give feedback early on and, so that process is going on, uh, is completed mid-year, and we, we actually have follow-ups with some, some others. One of my goals is to try to be more in the buildings. It's difficult to, you know, the great vacuum of central office, I call it. I go in my office and the phone calls and emails, starting stuff to get out, but I wanna be more, uh, of a presence in our buildings. And one of the things that I've done is, uh, scheduled that I'm going to attend, uh, faculty meetings in each facility. I've been to Monument and Shasbury, and I'm coming here on... The third?
The third.
February third. Todd was gracious enough to, he, I just wanna say, the first principal that responded to me when I sent out that, uh, I wanted to, to attend faculty meetings, uh, the first one to respond was your principal, so thank you for being there.
You're welcome.
Prompt, you would get a A-plus and a gold star if you were my student.
Golden paw, paw. Golden paw.
Oh, a golden paw, all right. Is that what we give up with the PBIS or?
We do.
All right, I should know that, maybe. That means, that means I'm not here often enough then if I didn't know that. So I don't necessarily intend to speak, it's to, to observe and see the dynamics of how it goes, and then maybe offer some suggestions if necessary or, or comment, so that's, that's been, that's ongoing.
I think that's a good idea.
I, and I have to tell, I mean, I, you know, I, I was a teacher for nineteen years, I don't know how much, you know, about me, but I was a teacher for nineteen years. Uh, I've been an administrator since, uh, two thousand, the year, the year two thousand, and been a superintendent since two thousand and three. And that's a long time to be removed from what's going on in classrooms, so I find it, uh, enjoyable to return to schools as often as I can. And the two faculty meetings, um, I've gone to so far, bring back flashbacks for me. The one, the meeting in Monument, Laura Boudreaux, I Director of Curriculum Instruction, and Pat Conway, our math, uh, coach were there, and they were doing math problems with the students, I mean, with the, with the faculty, and I was in a panic, so. As they handed me the...
And I was going to mention, um, faculty meetings may look different in different buildings. I don't use a faculty meeting to communicate a lot of the daily things with our staff. I can do that with email and other things. We use faculty meetings really as, um, professional development and to gain more knowledge about, um, our students. And that will be the topic of our upcoming February meeting.
And, and in Shasbury, it was, uh, a technology presentation on, uh, integrating technology more in your classroom, and it was, uh, math, professional learning for, uh, the staff and that, so, yeah, I...
And ours will be building relationships with students, and I have a guest speaker attending, so.
Good, look forward to it. And you're absolutely right, I mean, we, just like, there are times that I don't call staff meetings at central office, 'cause we're communicating through email or IC, yeah, so it's, it's changed. Last thing, um, and I just mentioned this as an FYI, we had scheduled a legislative breakfast for February first with our legislators. Well, as it turns out, the Chamber of Commerce has a legislative breakfast scheduled February first. So I'm going to, the, the Chamber has asked if we would like to do it jointly with them, and I think, uh, it, it squeezes the topic, but it also guarantees good attendance and that a lot of our legislators may, uh, so, uh, attend. 'Cause, you know, as you know, it, their schedule, especially while they're in session, is tough. I think I'm gonna, uh, work with the Chamber of Commerce to have that happen, and it's gonna be at the Hampton Inn on February first. But you'll, you'll all hear more details on that before that happens. Those are important, especially with all the changes in, uh, that's going on in education right now. And it, it can impact business, and what we hear from business leaders about what they wanna see coming out of our educational system. So it's not, it's not a bad idea to do something jointly. That's all I have for you tonight.
Oh, that's all, okay. All right, well, move, next in line is the principal's report.
Sure. Uh, just a couple of things this evening. I was able to meet with, um, Mike Gardner of DuFour, um, from our follow-up, um, meeting. And, um, he does have the four bus routes, went through the four bus routes, um, personally. And at this time, um, he doesn't feel like we, we need to change our day as far as, um, the bell schedule. Um, eight fifteen, our first bell, eight twenty-five is our tardy bell. All buses will be in by the tardy bell, eight twenty-five. May need to adjust five, ten minutes on, um, there's two different routes, um, that, um, we're gonna take a look at, and I'll notify parents. Um, in our latest newsletter, I put out, um, information to parents about the bus change, but also to let them know that we're maintaining our buses for activities and field trips. And, um, we have a lot of parents that really support that. Part of our education for our students, and I know you all do as board members. So I wanted to get that out to the community, that we, even though it's not the day-to-day routes, but we're able to maintain our buses for those, uh, special activities and field trips. So at this time, I'll keep close.
I have had a few other districts ask about that, so.
Right, I know, they're kinda jealous that we have our own buses for field trips and...
Yeah.
So we'll have to look into that about, um, about that question. The only other thing that I wanted to report, on Monday, we're meeting with, along with the Ben L, uh, staff at Hampton Inn. We have our in-service day, and it's, uh, the topic of differentiation, and we have a guest speaker in for the day. And we're looking forward to that in-service professional development on differentiating instruction for our students. And I think that's it.
When is the February vacation? I, and I should know.
It is the week of the fifteenth.
The week of the fifteenth. Okay, so what I'd like to ask the board members, uh, we definitely don't, not, I don't think we need to have a, a meeting on the week of the vacation, only because I don't think it's fair to Todd. So, um, do you wanna go the eleventh or go the twenty-fifth, a week before or a week after?
The tenth or the twenty-fourth would be a Wednesday.
I'm looking at my last calendar, the Wednesday was on this side.
Okay.
All right, the tenth or the twenty-fourth? Doug?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Oh, it doesn't matter to anybody, okay.
The, uh, yeah, I pro, on the tenth, I will have Shasbury and North Bennington, so.
But you don't have to come.
No, as long as you understand.
You can send Donna.
Yeah.
If you want.
Yeah, or I'll send to the Shasbury and North Bennington.
There you go, and you can come here, where it's quiet.
Well, I'm just wondering, is the tenth too soon, because we're having it now?
Well, then do the twenty-fourth.
All right, the twenty-fourth, okay?
Twenty-fourth is good.
Twenty-fourth, five-thirty. All right.
It's still Wednesday, the week.
Yes, it's a Wednesday.
And that might work for me, that works better for me, because the SU meeting's at seven o'clock.
At seven, yeah.
So if you're meeting at five-thirty, you should, yeah. Yeah, other people would have to get to the SU.
Mary Lee had asked, and I...
I should put it actually, it's, it's actually under my superintendent's report that I was supposed to mention it, but somehow I got talking about other things and forgot.
That's all right, but if you let her know it's February twenty-fourth, then we're golden. Okay. Uh, let's see, I do wanna, I've got a letter, and this is, this probably should've went under the, uh, consent agenda, but, um, it was buried, so I forgot it, but. A letter from Kathy Brooks, um, telling us that she's going to retire at the end of this school year, and, um...
It was in the package.
I'd like to, uh, accept it with regret. Kathy's got a picture in this building.
Beautiful penmanship, too.
Oh, she, yes, she has some beautiful penmanship, yes. So, um...
Forty-four years of service, forty-one years here.
Right here, yeah, she's been here a long time, yeah. So Kathy, we accept your resignation with regret, and that's important, and she knows that we, we do regret that she's leaving, but we understand, and good luck in your next adventure or the next part of your life. But, uh, like I tell all teachers that are retiring, make sure, take a month off, make sure you save one day a week to come back as a sub, because there's nothing better than a retired teacher to be a sub.
Does that mean she started here in nineteen seventy-five?
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
We're looking forward to Kathy continuing to, um, be a part of our Pownell community, and she intends to do that.
Oh, does she, oh, great, yeah, she does a lot for...
Spirit of sharing and, um, the drama club. She wants to remain active.
Perfect, oh, that's, that's even better.
When, when Cairo first started her class in third grade, she went around, I was, I was there that morning, and she went around the class from stu, student, "Oh, I taught your mother, I taught your father," it was like two-thirds of the class she had taught, one or both parents. And maybe the grandparents, too.
That's right.
Very interesting.
Okay, so that's all I have. Um, now the update on our Act forty-six is, I think you covered it?
Kinda covered, yeah.
Did you cover it all?
Yeah. The one thing I wanna add, there's, there's a lot of wild ideas being floated around, okay?
I haven't heard any.
But there, there's, uh, there are some, uh, some interesting ideas that some people are taking serious about splitting up the supervisory union. And, uh, the one, the, the late, last one I heard is, uh, if that Pownell withdraws from MAU, then we could be a, uh, a, a school choice, uh, community, and our kids could go anywhere. I mean, if these, these ideas are, are out there, the door, the door is open, people are looking at, uh, at remixing it.
So let me ask this, if we have that meeting here in Pownell, and of course we bring the community in, are we gonna be, uh, informed of all these different ideas that are thrown out at the table, or what is this? I mean, we, we don't want any surprises.
No, I, you know, what Jim's referring to is, I mean, people are...
Just throwing things out.
Things out there, yeah.
Yeah.
It, what the state isn't throwing those ideas. So how I structure the public forum is we will give a presentation, we'll have a handout with us, which is a synopsis of the law. We talk about it a little.
A little.
Yeah, and people are free to, that's where some of those suggestions are coming from, like at the forum, you know, I mean, why, you know, there's been talk at some school districts about, well, we, we should go independent and, like, you know, close our school and reopen it as an independent school as a way to keep our own local control. And there's a couple of cautions that go with that. One, you gotta get state approval for it to happen. And two, you have to look at the finances, the long-term finance of that really, really closely. And, uh, and that impacts what, what happens to your staff, and how do you retain staff, then you're an independent school, when you're, you know, staff members that, um, basically you dissolve the Teachers Association here, and they become off-contract employees, and, you know, you're, I mean, I'm not, you know...
Like North Bennington.
Exactly like North Bennington, but this is a bigger school, so, you know, we, we gotta be very careful. But we should look at everything, too, so, you know, I don't really consider them wild ideas. There's been a lot of suggestions out there as people, you know, look at this. But one of the cautions is that, um, you know, there's already been some votes in the state with consolidation that's happened. There's gonna be a bunch more on town, Meeting Day. And, um, they're going positive, so, you know, it's happening. So I don't know how the state's gonna interpret that if we try to do something radically different. You might have a fight on your hands, so that's, 'cause you still, you gotta get the Secretary of Education to make a recommendation that whatever alternative plan that you're suggesting, uh, they, she, she would agree with. And then they make the presentation to the state board, and they ultimately have that, that say on whether that, you know, yeah.
I'm trying to be very clear with the, with my board, is that I'm the Act forty-six member. At the end of all the Act forty-six meetings, that committee is gonna write a recommendation to the state. And whatever that is, I will not vote on it until everybody sees it, and I will stand by that.
I don't...
I will not act by myself about that.
And we don't really know that the process on it, whether it's that committee or the committee goes back and makes a recommendation to the individual boards and the boards, um, um, then would take a vote on it and then see what happens that way, right? What we do know is, because we're not doing a consolidated, I mean, an accelerated consolidation, which would have to happen this year, and they do it consolidated, every member of the SU would have to vote in agreement. That's almost impossible to do because of the North Bennington situation. They, they wanna maintain their independence for pre-K through, uh, six, and then they're part of the SU. The state can't really answer how that, how that aligns, because my interpretation is saying that that, that alignment can't happen, because you can't offer school choice and operate a school at the same time, so if we become one school district, that, that hasn't been answered yet, so consolidate, accelerated consolidation, um, was never really an option here. The other thing that I'm attempting to do is, um, you know, we can apply for a grant for the Study Committee and then get, consultants are in short supply, and consultants can be a good thing and a bad thing, and I can have, you know, after the red committee consultants, you know, there's some, as I talk to other board members, some have, uh, a bad taste in their mouth about the consultants, you know, who is this person to come in and tell us what to do?
I'm one of them.
But it also, I, I think with, with the, um, diverse arguments that we're having throughout, uh, the supervisory union, it might be have, if we can find the right person to come in and, and talk to the committee about the process of what, if this is what you wanna do, how's that process gonna work, 'cause I'm certainly not an expert on it. I mean, I, I went to another meeting today up in Rutland where we, I got more information on it, but... So I, uh, I have talked to Nikki Self, do you know her? She was hired by, um, Ron's School Board Association and, uh, Ron's Pretends Association, and one, possibly Visbit, I, I don't wanna misspeak and, and give the wrong agency. And she is the Act forty-six coordinator for the state that way, so.
Yes, I did meet her.
Yeah, you, and...
We met her, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, I said, we want, I want a consultant to at least come down and make a presentation to the Act forty-six Study Committee. And she told me they're having, and this won't surprise any of you from this part of the state, they're having difficulty getting consultants to come this far down to southwest Vermont.
Yeah, 'cause we are, we're like in Hawaii, we're so far away from up here.
But it was all right for me to drive up to Rutland today, right? Yeah.
My, my thought, too, is, um, when they kinda narrow it down to one or two or even three suggestions, is there any possibility that we may, all the board members can, can, uh, get together in one place? Maybe even the auditorium at the high school and, and maybe discuss it. I know it's, they have the committee and, but it's one from each district. So I mean, I think it, this is such, this, this is such an important, um, decision, that I think it would, I don't know, this is just my own personal thought, that I, I would love to see us all get together. I would love to see us all get together and then if someone has a question, we can just ask it.
And I would love to have somebody to facilitate that meeting other than myself. Somebody who is really, really well-versed on what, where the state is coming from on this and can answer those difficult questions, particularly like, you know, if we don't have this in place by the deadline or our proposal to them, or our proposal gets rejected, you know, what are the options? What is the state gonna do? And, you know, and Jim talks about wild, you know, things. I still hear from people who think that this isn't gonna happen, you know, that the governor's gonna change and there's gonna be a new secretary of education and the law's gonna get repealed.
I have a question for this week, as far as the caps, every day there's news on it.
Yeah.
Are the caps in, cut, half, gone?
Well, this is what I.
The latest, latest.
So the latest, latest would be that, well, latest of maybe my reading of my emails at three o'clock today because I get them from, as you, the Ron School Board Association, the Ron Superintendent Association. The House Ed Committee voted, and I wanna say like twenty-six to one. No, the Senate Committee, Education Committee voted twenty-six to one to repeal the caps altogether.
The Senate voted?
Yes, not the full Senate, their Education Committee. And the House Ed Committee voted the point nine percent increase to cover health insurance. So it's gonna have to go to a conference committee now to work out the differences. You're gonna hear in a little while, for now, your budget's set, same like everybody else, so. So I'm more worried now about next year if the caps stay in place because, you know, because of healthy, you heard your audit report, because of healthy budget funds, you, the contingency funds, what am I? Thank you, fund balance, slight uptick in your student count. We're gonna keep under the, and change in transportation costs. We're gonna keep under the cap in, it looks like in all our school districts in the supervisory union.
This year.
This year, but next year, you can't count on that fund balance being there. So I, and I know, I don't think it's fair to, because it's applied evenly to everybody yet, you know, where you've been conservative in your spending, so your percentage increase is small, you know, I don't know about that. So I don't know, I mean, the governor, you've, I'm repeating what you've probably read, the governor seems to support repeal. But what I'm hearing, and I'm not there, I just hear, you know, reports that in the House particularly, that your representatives need to hear from you if you are against them. And because that's where it seems to be the division right now that they feel, that the law got passed last year by putting these caps in there. That's what convinced people who weren't supporting the Act forty-six to go along with it. And now you're talking about repealing it. And so I'm not there, I just get reports, I can only speak to, but I could be wrong. But that's what my understanding is right now, that it's, it's really in the House and whether there's room for compromise, which means if there isn't, it's gonna stay exactly the way it is.
We're okay for now, we dodged, we dodged a bullet this year.
Dodged a bullet because you've been frugal, you have good fund balances, we added the three-year-olds that brought up our student numbers. And we're not gonna have, we might not have a fund balance last, next year or as healthy as one. And you're not gonna see, you're already adding the three-year-olds, you're not gonna be able to add them the following year, so you might not have the revenue that goes with them. So that's, that's where my concern would be now.
I think at some point, we have to stand our ground when they came out with mandates with no money to support it. And until we do, they're gonna keep throwing that at us. And I'm to the point now, after sixteen, seventeen years, you know, I'm ready to fight them. I'm ready to say, look, if you want this to happen, then you need to give us the money to do it. I mean, they, they hand out money left and right for gosh knows what. But when it comes to education, they just say, no, this is a good idea, we want you to do this. And I think we need to start as, as soon as we can, to start just saying, no, we're not gonna do it. What's the fine? Be far cheaper than, and I have nothing against educating three-year-olds. But the amount of money that they're, they're charging us for ten hours a week, the next thing you know, they're gonna be bringing the two-year-olds in.
Or upping the hours.
Yeah, you know, I don't know, I just, I'm to the point where I think this is ridiculous, so, that's my two cents with this. All right, we all sat there, thank you, Jim, for explaining that. All right, what we're doing is we're going to move our budget discussion to the bottom. But I wanna do the FYI, we have our budget status report enclosed. And we also have the student enrollment for January and we appreciate getting both of those items. So now we'll move our budget discussion to right now and we can, we don't need to be on the TV for that. So we'll move into our budget discussion. And thank you very much for recording, you did a good job.